On the order of the regular meeting, Andrea Dutton, Council of Rural Call, please.
Mayor Garn here.
Mayor Protham Carter here.
Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wish it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, before we get moving on to the consent calendar, I just want to um, um, make everyone aware that we are pulling the last item. There will be no first reading of the resolution one seven three dash two zero two three. Our, um, oh no, I'm sorry. Item one. Proposed rental housing inspection program will not be on the agenda today. Um, our building, person is not here. Kevin is sick today, and so we will have this in the first reading on the January.
January second.
Second meeting. So, but if there's anyone here who wants to make a public comment about it, you can still make your public comment, and that will be received and recorded, and then you can make your decision whether you want to come back from January or not. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. No, no, it is reverse on us.
It's reverse on us.
It's reverse.
I'm, I'm literally reading.
Yeah.
Is it possible to move that forward so that they don't have, people don't have to sit through them?
Yeah. Well, I'm sure they'd love to, but yes. Wait, was everyone up to get consensus, and we will move it up? Okay, then we'll move on to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the commission that. I apologize. I wonder why I was sitting here.
Yeah.
What's the setup? Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda, consideration of the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Absolutely. Welcome.
My name is Peggy Patmore. I live here in Riodell, of course. And good evening, City Council and staff. First of all, I want to thank the City Council and the staff for your dedication in the many hour, extra hours of work in the aftermath of the earthquakes. I am here to express my concern and draw your attention to the emergency preparedness plan for our food supply. As a lifetime resident of Humboldt County and of Riodell for the past twenty-six years, I understand the importance of being well-prepared for potential disasters. And I believe that addressing certain issues within our current emergency plan is crucial to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. Specifically, I would like to bring to your attention the food supply issues that could arise during and after a disaster. In the event of a major disaster, access to food may be severely limited or cut off because of road and bridge damages. It is essential that our community is adequately prepared to handle this challenge, to avoid hunger, especially in the most vulnerable citizens, along with avoiding theft and chaos. I propose the following considerations for the enhancement of our emergency preparedness plan with a focus on the food issues. First of all, food storage facilities. In this, I, um, in establishing community storage facilities, um, I recommend strategically locating them throughout the city to ensure that essential food items are readily available to residents in the aftermath of an emergency. These facilities or food banks could be shipping containers equipped to store non-perishable items and be easily accessible to members of the community upon designated situations. Many homes do not have adequate storage area for a week or more of supplies of non-perishable items to take care of themselves. I propose each household who chooses to participate could gather their own non-perishable items to bring to the food bank to deposit on designated days for initial storage and annual rotation for set shelf life. If the city would purchase stackable storage totes, which could be labeled with resident name and address, and purchase shipping containers for food banks, we would be a safer and more self-sufficient community in the time of an emergency. These purchases would be reusable, would be a reusable investment for Riodell. The next item is food resilience programs. I would encourage and support local initiatives that promote food resilience, such as community gardens and local food production. These programs can play a crucial role in the supplementing food supply during emergencies, inflation, and fostering community collaboration.
Is there a lot?
Uh, more.
It's more than, it's like a three-minute limits kind of a situation, but probably just that much.
Go.
Okay.
The next is public awareness and education. The emergency preparedness fair at the Riodell Resource Center was a valuable event to enhance public awareness. I think more campaigns to empower individuals and families on the importance of preparedness is essential to better navigate post-emergency scenarios. The Riodell Fire District had an instruction sheet on preparing a well-stocked emergency kit, and the booklet Living on Shaky Ground from the Tsunami Warning Organization would be an excellent resource for every citizen, along with dates and meeting times for help and support to make emergency plans. Collaboration with the City of Riodell Fire Department, every resident, Community Resource Center, and the school can keep our city safe and functioning. I understand that the City Council has many responsibilities, but I firmly believe that addressing the food supply issue in our emergency preparedness plan will contribute significantly to the overall safety and well-being of our community. I appreciate your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, as I'm sure we all do, your actual time and attention to such an important issue. We'll move to the consent calendar. Is there any item that needs to be removed from staff, council, public? Now I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. I have some, you have a motion. Was there a second? Second, a motion and a second? Motion carries five zero. Staff communication, City Manager, page eleven in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garns and members of the council. The, uh, an interesting item was, uh, was recently come up, uh, and there will be a meeting tomorrow, uh, in Fortuna Wednesday at two thirty PM at the City Hall. The Running Recreation District and, uh, La, 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 or potentially looking at some options, uh, for annexation of the recreation districts, uh, in, uh, to kind of follow the high school district boundaries. So that would include, um, Riodell and, uh, Scotia, as well as some other outlying areas, uh, the purpose of which would be, as, as I'm sure the council has read in the news, that, uh, Fortuna, the Clean Foundation, others are interested in building a community pool. Uh, and of course, uh, there are, there is the capital expense associated with building a community pool, but there's also, uh, ongoing operational costs. And so, uh, staff, uh, and I believe the mayor and, uh, Mayor Protham will be attending tomorrow, uh, just as an informational, uh, item, uh, not to represent any, uh, any position on the matter, but just to, to hear about the process and what potential advantages there are, uh, for this community in that process. Uh, in other news, Chief Greg Allen, uh, attended and was a panelist on the substance use disorder town hall in the city of Eureka, uh, just yesterday. And so, uh, I want to thank him for attending that and thank the city of Eureka for hosting it. I haven't watched the video, but, um, and no doubt it's very informative, uh, and folks can, uh, watch that on Access Humboldt, their YouTube page, or I assume also on their, on their webpage itself. Um, with that, um, there is some final emergency crack ceiling occurring today and Thursday on, uh, Blue Slide Bellevue Monument Roads. Uh, those are specially designated roads, uh, by the state as, uh, FHA roads and, and group passes for, uh, the route between, uh, Riodell and, uh, Burndale. Um, so those, uh, pro, those projects should be finished by, by this Thursday. Uh, with that, if there's any other questions that the council may have, I'm happy to try to answer them or, or staff.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Protham? No question. Councilmember Orr?
No question.
Uh, member Woodall?
No question.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, um, on the annexation, that's just recreation.
Yeah, so it's, it's just a recreation district. Um, you know, we'll, we'll learn more about what that means and what the process is for that to actually go forward and whether that, that district is actually interested in, in pursuing that.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public who has a question or staff? Are there any hand raised? City mail? I will close that item, and we will move on to the presentation and update from GHD, the City Engineer, page fourteen in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garns, members of the council. So I'm going to give Rosa here, uh, some, some room to put up our PowerPoint from GHD. The computer is running a little slow today for unknown reasons. Uh, so as Rosa sets that up, I, you know, I want to say that, uh, you know, we have a number of big-scale, large projects coming up for twenty twenty-four, uh, and that was even before, uh, the earthquake. So, uh, GHD continues to be on point for, uh, a lot of this work. Uh, and so today we have, uh, from the GHD crew regularly working and interacting with the city, uh, Stephen Pearl, Rebecca Crowe, and Hannah Gedanian, uh, from GHD to, to help, uh, help us go through this, uh, to this PowerPoint. Now, after this meeting, or after this agenda item, we'll also have an item, uh, more specific to, to streets and kind of prospective, uh, street planning. So there will be a little bit more of a, of a dive and just general discussion on streets. But I want to go ahead and I think if, uh, Rosa has this thing set up, and thank you, Rosa, we will go ahead and hand it over to Rebecca Crowe. Thank you.
Hi Rebecca. Thank you, Kyle. And thank you, council, for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Um, Kyle did a great job of getting me prepped. You know, we are, I don't have to do introductions. Um, we're going to cover four major areas of the city system that we're working on, um, the transportation, a couple different road projects, um, a couple different drinking water projects, wastewater, and then some earthquake engineering support. So for the transportation portion, I'm going to hand it over to Stephen Pearl. He's the city's representative on the, um, HCO Act, um, and does a really great job of advocating for the city and all of them. So we'll move to the next slide, and I'll let Stephen come up, and you'll see me again when we start talking about some of the water.
Awesome. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you. Thank you, council, and thank Kyle and staff. Um, as Rebecca said, I represent the City of Riodell on the Transportation Committee, uh, at HCO. Uh, it's a group of people, uh, that comes together, uh, tries to approve the projects countywide, um, that are all part of the Technical Advising Committee, uh, Committee for Transportation Project. Main source of funding of that program is the STIP program, Straight Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, every, every city or entity has a list of projects, so the regional transportation plan, uh, that can be developed into a project study report in order to submit, uh, before the TAC committee, uh, for funding. Now, I've worked with Kyle on an example list, uh, there are projects that are already on that, uh, regional transportation program, known as the R-TIP, um, as example projects for the council to consider, uh, for us to develop and project study reports that can be readily available to submit in a STIP, uh, application for funding. Uh, so currently, right now, we have active projects since two thousand nineteen, uh, Riodell State Road School Projects. That's a big sidewalk infill project, um, that has been, uh, funded through that STIP program through twenty twenty-two. Uh, we've completed environmental documentation, and we'll begin on twenty-nine in the new year, uh, to be, uh, prepared for construction in this summer for a big package. Uh, we have the two thousand twenty-two Yew River Trail Project, uh, that my colleague Luke, uh, Allen is working on, um, construction also to start in twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, the Neighborhood Pedestrian Connectivity Project, other sidewalk infill project, uh, mostly dedicated around neighborhoods in the school, um, another project that will be starting, uh, summer of twenty twenty-four for construction. Next slide, please. Uh, so upcoming projects, uh, no, no projects have been brought before the TAC, uh, for STIP funding. Uh, as I mentioned initially, uh, working with, uh, Kyle, it's to develop a list of potential projects, um, that we can develop in a project study report to bring forward in the TAC for STIP funding. Uh, using just some examples, uh, that we could potentially develop into PSRs that the city council can decide upon. Um, we had ideas to prepare two master PSRs, basically one for Bellevue. Um, on that list of projects I mentioned, that's in the regional transportation program, um, there are several Bellevue Avenue projects that are considered. Um, one consideration would be to lump all of those together in one master project study report, and if certain elements don't get funded, um, those can be easily taken out, um, to size down the project based on available funding for that program to year. Uh, and then the second PSR would just be taking care of any other maintenance paving and overlay projects that are also on, on good program, that'd be looking at a citywide, um, citywide approach, um, also just a list of projects that can be consolidated into one, can be easily added or removed, depending on funding as available that year. Next slide, please. So this is kind of an, uh, overview of Bellevue Avenue, um, one of which could be from Blue Side Road to Wildwood Avenue. That's basically the entire stretch that's within the city limits of City of Riodell. Um, that would include maintenance paving, uh, with two-inch overlay, um, that's for the, for that whole, the whole stretch. We have some wide drainage work from Blue Side Road to Creek Street that's coming off of that steep hill, um, and then Creek Street right near the city's, uh, city's boundary. And then pedestrian connectivity project, this was, um, initially a part of the pedestrian connectivity project that is under, uh, under design now. Uh, that one got removed, uh, during that allocation process with the R-TIP, uh, just due to the available funding. Um, so this would be a similar, a similar approach, um, having multiple projects consolidated into one that we'd be able to add or remove. Um, so Bellevue, lots of work that could be done there. And then next slide, please. Then throughout the rest of the city, um, there's, there's several, uh, several areas around town. Second Avenue to Davis Street, uh, to Bonner Street, uh, maintenance paving, two-inch overlay, striping, um, slurry seal, uh, Wildwood Avenue, um, the main drag there, uh, all the way up to the bridge, that's slurry seal, uh, slurry seal and striping. Um, these are all just preventative measures, uh, to make the road last a little longer. And then we have Nunn Street, Orchard Street, Cedar Street, and View Street. Uh, that's , uh, you've seen there, just, uh, you know, just to the west of Wildwood Avenue. Those are also just all maintenance paving, two-inch overlay, striping, and slurry seal. Next slide, please. Uh, continuing on with transportation, uh, these are the remaining, uh, areas that we lived at, Island Street and Ogle Avenue. Um, Island Street would consist of maintenance paving, two-inch overlay, striping, and slurry seal, uh, while Ogle Avenue, that'd be complete road reconstruction with some drainage improvements and several utility upgrades that would need to be done as a part of that project. These are all projects, um, that are categorized as fixed first, um, with the regional transportation program, um, meaning they're going to be more competitive in that R-TIP, uh, application process. So, thank you. Next slide.
Does anyone have any questions for Stephen?
Good, yes.
Yeah, on the, on the Ogle Avenue reconstruction and drainage improvement, is that something that we have grant more or?
Uh, we do not. So what, uh, what Stephen just went through is kind of a list of, of possible projects, and we will be working with the council to kind of narrow it on this, on the specific projects and provide more details. This is illustrative only, uh, at this point. But right now, uh, part of the problem that we have that I wanted to highlight in the next agenda item is that the city has, for the most part, picked, uh, most of the low-hanging fruits of maintenance in terms of paving and road reconstruction or road paving. So asphalt maintenance overlays, relatively simple projects with maybe some minor drainage modifications. What we're starting to get into is our significantly more costly projects that exceed, uh, the, uh, ability of the city to undertake, in addition to our need to maintain the existing infrastructure that we do have. Um, so, you know, there's kind of two, two components here. One, which is getting the streets back up to an acceptable level, and then the second part is maintaining them. It's always cheaper to maintain a street than it is to have to go and reconstruct it. It's significantly cheaper. Um, so we want to make sure that, that both, uh, both of those, uh, prongs of the TAC are, are addressed in the, in the long term. And so sinking, um, all of the money into, say, one, uh, expensive project, it will solve one section of the street, one section of the city's streets, but that we have obviously a broader, um, you know, such, uh, system to maintain. And so we're going to have to be very dependent on and, and, and active in terms of, of pulling down grant funding, uh, and other sources to help pull some of these major, uh, reconstruction projects off. So just the drainage, uh, component, specifically, uh, Councilmember Wilson, on, and Ogle Street is, uh, is approximately a nine hundred thousand dollar project. And so that, and that doesn't include, uh, street resurfacing or anything that, you know, um, you know, really makes the projects, uh, uh, you know, beneficial toward, for the public. It's a drainage component that's underground and people don't see or realize is, is fundamental to, uh, to the project. But that's just one example of, of, of a project where it exceeds. That would be sing, single-handedly the single largest, um, outlay of, of the street expenditures for the city. These maintenance paves we've been able to do usually over the course of a year for half a million-dollar directly contracts, uh, to, to push, uh, some of these certain projects out, so like, like Rivers Eye or, uh, Cherry and, uh, and Orchard and, and all those different projects we've been able to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? The public have any questions, transportation related? Not any hand raised?
I mean, is that one more thing just to add on to what Kyle said, uh, STIP funding when attending these, uh, TAC meetings, the STIP funding is the primary source of funding for the entire county for these transportation projects. It's most dependable, um, and what we've seen, uh, throughout the county, um, each year, that programmed amount that is coming to Hobo County, um, keeps increasing. Um, so with the money that becomes available, we don't know how long that money is going to be available, uh, maybe five years down the road. The state may move funds around, and then we may get less funding. It's, we're unsure. So these PSRs, I mean, it's basically getting an idea of how much these would cost, um, and being able to just have those in order and ready to go when those, when that funding is available.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Um, moving on to the city water system. So, um, we've been working with the city, um, since around twenty eighteen on the water distribution system upgrade project. There was a, you know, preliminary engineering report. There was some design work that was done, and that project was finally funded this year to complete design. So it's about a twelve point eight million dollar grant. It's a hundred percent grant funding. The city doesn't, um, have a match, and that project is going to result in multiple improvements across town, and construction is slated to start in the summer of twenty twenty-four. We've been able to leverage these state board funds to, um, increase the amount of data we have on the city system, so, um, to ensure that we're understanding what's going on in the ground when we send, you know, contractors and construction crews out there. We've been collecting additional, um, information through the GIS on, um, you know, existing storm drains, so we don't have conflicts, you know, where existing water meters are in relation to sidewalks and property lines, um, and other, uh, potential conflicts. We've also been able to do some drone imaging, so the, um, the photography that we're able to associate with the design is approved, and that information can be carried on to, uh, multiple projects. Um, the ninety-five percent design package was submitted, um, on, uh, November seventeenth. Um, it's being, you know, it was reviewed by the Division of Drinking Water, and it's being reviewed by the city. Um, we're on target to finish the design in January and keep that project moving forward. So.
Next slide.
Another project, um, when we were working on the water distribution system project, we realized that there was going to be benefit to the city to parsing out different pieces. There were different pieces that were, you know, more ready than others and maybe eligible for different funding sources. So the city currently has a pipeline in the, um, southbound one-on-one bridge across the Yew River. And so we worked with the city in twenty twenty to submit the hazard mitigation grant. The funding came through for that again this year, and so we're working on the preliminary design for that. Then there'll be some approvals from FEMA, um, and Calabria. That one may go a little slower just because we've often got to wait for approvals, but we did look at several different scenarios, considering, you know, potential conflicts with Caltrans, future, the city's future ability to maintain and operate the pipeline. And, and what this graphic shows is we're looking at an alternative that will kind of wrap us around that existing Caltrans. So we'll, um, come off, uh, there's a little, um, side road on Aloha, come across, uh, the river there, directionally drill underneath the river similar to your wastewater pipe. If you were, around when that project was running, you've got an existing, um, wastewater line that goes on the, um, on the west side of the bridge. So we're looking at putting the water line on the east side. So that project is, uh, moving forward.
Any questions on the water system? We're going to move to wastewater next.
And so the wastewater system, we've been working on a sanitary thorough evaluation study for a while now. It has a couple of different components, and we've really been trying to leverage, leverage these, um, planning funds to address some of the city's Leverage these planning funds to address some of the city's key issues first. So one of those has been. Compliance with disinfection byproducts. So we've been working with Derek and we'll start working with Sunshine now. On finishing off that. So we've done some initial analysis and testing and it looks like the proposed new system is going to get the city in compliance with those requirements. So we've been able to move that component forward. There's some other components we're waiting for. We've asked for some additional funding. The project is a little bit on hold in some areas, waiting for additional funding to finalize. The areas that we're going to propose for improvement and what those improvements would be. And one of the things, like I said, we've tried to leverage this funding to look at some of the city's highest needs. If you move to the next slide. We have been able to leverage these funds to put together a construction application to replace the panel line or to upsize the panel line. You may be familiar, your wastewater staff spends a lot of time in the winter worrying about this location, B I G things, getting temporary comps out there. And so this project would upsize that line so that you don't have those issues. So we've essentially, you know, got a preliminary design completed, just got field work, some additional field work that was required completed. We should have those reports in by the end of this week and that project should be moving forward and getting funded next year. So and ideally we get in place before the nature of 2024. And then the last item I have is earthquake damage. Were there any, you know, generic questions on? And then in terms of earthquake engineering support, I did want to give credit to the city. I was on a call yesterday with Mayor Garms. City Manager Knob and then also giving wastewater operator talking with folks from the county, CalOES, Michael Wire's office. And there's really complimenting the city and how hard the city staff is working to, you know, there's a lot, you know, on that call was just the breadth of different things and different programs that you're looking at. So mine's goes a little bit more narrow. So we're looking at putting together damage summary reports. So CalOES requires that, you know, you go through this process to say, okay. Here's the event, here's the damage, here's how you're going to fix it and here's the initial cost. And then once that's submitted, that work can start. So we've completed the evaluation on the contact basin. We've actually now completed the evaluation on the water pumping wells that's in here in boxes. We are in progress on evaluating the lift stations. The analysis of the infestation gallery is almost complete and should be submitted to the city this week. And then we're also looking at some of these water line crossings, which can be a little bit more difficult to put together some of the assessments because it's all underground and a little bit trickier. So we're really focusing on those components. The other one that's, I didn't mention is water drainage tank. And so fucking Randy, that's another priority we want to bring to it forward. So that's where we're supporting the city and then as CalOES looks at those improved, though, we'll be moving forward with designs and then. Making improvements for it. That was all we had for an update. We're welcome to stay for any questions. I think Steven's going to stick around for your next item. Hannah and I are going to take over Hannah's. Danny works on a lot of the city's projects. She's going to choose almost full time on the water distribution system design project right now. And does a lot of coordination on our quarterly reporting for the different grant programs and is also helping with SSEF. Wanted her to be in front of the council and if there are any tricky questions, I needed my back.
Right, right. Well, thank you. Are there any questions? Any member of the public? Can you hand raise your hand? No, so thank you. Thank you for everything. You guys have been working really super hard, especially since the earthquake. Just like double up on everything you had to do. So thank you so very much. We really all appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Take care. Happy holidays. And now we will move on to the review of street planning and street work. It's twenty one.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Garms and members of the council. We do not have a PowerPoint. Much to the relief of our laptop here, but. Wanted to provide an update and, you know, just have a general discussion about the streets planning kind of projects that we. We do need to cover, just to reiterate what I mentioned a few moments ago. Really just fundamentally moving forward. A lot of our projects that we've been able to fund in the past have been general fund contribution. Towards, towards street repairs. As we move forward, we do have a lowered sales tax rate. And we also have increasing costs and demands on our general fund. So for, for example, in the police department, the costs continue to, to increase. And we can expect that trend to continue. And then we also need to maintain a prudent reserve level in the event of further economic distress or. Other catastrophes. And then obviously there is kind of this overarching issue related to the earthquake reimbursements. What level, that sort of thing that puts some constraints on city finances. That being said, there are, there are funds available in, in cities' road, streets fund. Where we can, you know, pull off some projects in the coming, in the coming years. So, but we are going to have to prioritize and work through this in our, in our last big prioritization session for the initiation of the five year plan. One of the directions that the council gave. Was to, for staff to develop a list of projects where we would do our best to not identify, to identify projects where we were. Not going to have to immediately rip up the road in anticipation of the, of the water capital improvement project or any other projects on our horizon. So to the extent that we knew at the time that, that that was the case, those were the projects to move forward. So hence the low hanging fruit relative maintenance paving with few modifications. And so we've been able to pave quite a number of streets and as the council was briefed. Earlier this year, the city's PCI index went from one of the lowest in the county of Humboldt to one of the highest. So this council's made a tremendous amount of progress. It's been, streets have been consistently like the number one priority of this council. For a number of years and, and I suspect that it will remain one of those high priorities moving forward. But as I discussed in the, the last agenda item, we are starting to run into projects that far exceed. The general fund's ability to, to cover those costs. And so we're going to have to get more creative in terms of how we fund those projects. And that involves pulling down the grant funding. And also just realistic, having realistic expectations about what streets the city can get to even utilizing grant funding. Simply because some of our worst streets are, you know, low traffic, non arterial streets. So they are not necessarily very competitive for grant funding. That is, is certainly a constraint on, on some of our big, our big projects. Certainly the water capital improvement projects, as we hope we're sitting here this time next year with a completed project. Several new streets will open up for some of the lower cost basic maintenance paving. Grindouts and inlay paving that are within the reach of, of the city to, to pull off. So in Rebecca Crowe's sheet, there's a map that lists out some of those streets. Now, on certain other streets, there are multiple issues. So Second Avenue is an example of that where there's significant drainage constraints. There's, there is wastewater lines that also need to be addressed in that corridor. And that project we can anticipate will be a fairly expensive project. For Oval Avenue. After the C I P is completed, the water C I P is completed, the water line will be replaced on that stretch of road. However, what remains there to be corrected is the drainage issue. I don't believe there are any wastewater line issues on that particular street. That would prevent us from, from doing the maintenance pave on, on that particular street. But we have significant drainage issues and we don't want to exacerbate those issues. And we do need to get to the, to the drainage solution there. So Woodchurch did perform a study. It was one of the five year capital improvement list items, which is to get kind of a firm idea of what. The valuable drainage situation remedy could be. And that estimate came in. At. Nine hundred and four thousand dollars, roughly a million dollars when you put contingency. And that's just the drainage work. It doesn't include the overlay for the road service itself. So in, in all reality, you're looking at a one to one point three million dollar project, specifically this for that last remaining segment of Oval Avenue. Again, it exceeds our, our forecasted general fund revenue and allotments for, for capital projects. So, so these are projects, and I think Stephen talked about earlier, which is to help develop kind of these project study reports. That give kind of some preliminary information for grant funders. You know, maybe some broad estimated costs and those sorts of things as to what we would need to do and how competitive those, those projects would be. And again, we are talking about relatively speaking, low density residential street, non arterial. But it does need to be fixed and we need to. Address and figure out a path forward for addressing those streets. There are others that may be more competitive. For example, we do have a truck route through town, goes right by City Hall and Davis Street, all the way down to the freeway. While that road is in fair condition right now because the, the. Several years ago, we did some, some maintenance on that road to try to extend the life, not necessarily make it perfect, but extend the life of that road. You know, it continues to be in a fair condition, but it clearly is going to need work in, in the coming years. And ideally within the next five, no less than the next five years. So that could be a relatively simple project of again, a grindout inlay on just the travel lanes and relatively affordable. But it's also one that's potentially very. Attractive to, to the regular STIP maintenance funding. So our sidewalks project, I think. Was an award of seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, which is great because I know that there were a lot of desire for sidewalk improvements. In the community. And so with the help of G H D, we were able to pull down that allocation. Moving forward though, this truck route may be exactly what, what, what would be fundable through STIP. Again, Bellevue, Bellevue Avenue itself. Is a very narrow road with a lot of residential and pedestrian activity with no sidewalks, no bike lanes, no parking. That is, you know, potentially fundable through active transportation or STIP or other funding sources. So the more material that we have ready to kind of pull off the shelf and submit, the better off we're going to be. So. Since as, as H C O C kind of moves its, its laser of attention off of the Indianola. Bypass issue between your, your Erika and Arcata, there may be some additional funding opportunities. Or freedom funding opportunities, I should say, for other communities. So these are, these are the things that we're looking at. And again, I mentioned that, you know, there's kind of two, two avenues here. One, which is, you know, expensive reconstruction. And then there's also maintenance and we want to make sure that we're focusing also on the maintenance of the existing infrastructure. Because when you look at Riadelle on the whole, many of our streets are actually in pretty good condition, not all of them by any means. But many of our main arterials, Wildwood Avenue are in great condition. We want to try to preserve that. And so, so we want to make sure that we're addressing maintenance issues. There is a nexus between economic development and people's perception of a community and the cleanliness of their streets. So on page twenty four of every packet, one of the things that I think the council might want to consider. In, in a new five year SIP would be potentially the purchase of the streets we were, for example, to. Provide staff the tools to provide a regular maintain the system. So right now we are dependent on outside contractors and their availability to come in with equipment at a reasonable cost to, to do that sweeping. And, you know, it's, it's hard for us to. All, you know, send out the cones and the flyers saying, please park off the street. We've got one shot to clean up the whole street for the year. But if there was kind of a regularized maintenance regime where people knew that's pull their cars off the street. Where perhaps there was even some incentives for people to pull their car off the street. We could more regularly maintain it. I think visually it's beneficial to the community. Obviously helps with stormwater drainage, which is, which is another kind of unaddressed, unfunded. In piece of infrastructure. We often talk about water, wastewater, all that stuff, streets even. But we have a huge stormwater system that conveys a lot of material through it. And we want to try to limit the amount of, obviously, you know, biological material and sand and debris and whatnot from going into the, into that system. So and that may also eventually be one of those regulations that we are forced to adopt. Many jurisdictions have kind of voluntary mitigation plans for that. So, so that's something that we want to look at. But and again, we don't have much equipment specific to street maintenance. So a couple of vibroplates and just minor equipment like that. So I think it would be a good idea to at least throw in an equipment component into the mix to, to look at that maintenance component. But obviously there are other streets, Second Avenue comes up regularly, Oval Bellevue comes up regularly. We still need work to be completed on North Riverside, that cold sack. Street. And then there are various other projects. There's, there's no shortage of projects that we can pull into, into a PSR. And then, and then also, you know, part of the maintenance that we have done in the city that I think has been cost effective. Have been our slurry seal and prep work. So and we've tried to spread that out throughout the town. That not focusing on any specific area. But again, like Davis Street was one of the first projects that we did to try to extend the life of, of that roadway and prevent it deterioration. And doing some spot repairs and patches and then the overlays. And we did that most recently in the avenues. Again, basically a good road, just maybe need some minor work and then, and then sealing. And we will have to, you know, readdress some of the areas that we have sealed. But again, it's significantly cheaper. To, to do that maintenance and, and helps improve the aesthetics of the road as well, for at least a period of time. So some of the items on page twenty five, number seven, would be slurry seal and prep work. Some of the additional streets we would want to be looking at are South Wildwood. We've got North Wildwood covered. Over the past few years, West Center, so that's in front of the school district doing some. You know, patch repairs there. And then also, obviously, when we do these slurries here, we're also redoing the pavement markings as well. Miller and Time, the Low and Fern. The other sections of the avenues that we have not gone to Edwards Street, down to now the Trail, hopefully the Trail and the River Access. Monument Road from Wildwood to Pacific is another example of one that we did slurry seal not that long ago. Six or so years ago, you know, and once we get the earthquake repairs done in that section. It's probably time to go ahead and do another slurry seal in that, in that section. And that would obviously, again, be cost effective. Blue slide is a possibility. You know, probably we're looking at more of a chip seal for that, working with the county on that. If uh their their tax measure goes through uh to to look at some of the the options for Blue Slide, what's appropriate for that type of road. And then Monument Road uh to Pacific, again, that's part of the truck route, um, you know, significant uh uh significantly heavy traffic goes through there. Uh, we want to make sure that we're we're dealing with that uh cost effectively, uh, because most of that traffic really doesn't have much to do with the city at all. It's, uh, you know, truck traffic from the unincorporated, logging trucks and whatnot moving through. And that might be another one that's um applicable for STIP. Um, the other thing is, we're also dependent on our uh other jurisdictional partners to do the slurry seals. So every time we participate, I think we participated in three of the last four slurry seal projects, the regional projects. They're either headed up by the county, uh, City of Arcata, Fortuna, or uh Eureka. And we basically work with them uh on a regional basis so that we're bidding out a very large project. And so the scale of it, um, just the economics of it work out um significantly better for us um to get a lot of work done, including um the uh striping. Um, so with that, and I don't know if Randy has any other thoughts, um, but um, again, this item, we want to try to bring it back into January or February to kind of dive a little bit more into detail, do some uh additional cost projections, and then kind of come up with our our next five year plan. Um, for this uh construction season, and you may recall, uh, this time last year, we talked about the streets projects and how we were going to take kind of a little bit of a pause uh for this year in terms of those those projects in light of all the other ones going on and in community. Um, and so we do have some program money uh that uh that uh we'll be putting out uh to bid in in uh January or February uh for uh some maintenance on
Elm Street.
Elm Street, uh, and and also there's some earthquake related work, asphalt work that needs to happen on uh in random locations throughout town. Um, so, uh, so that's our immediate plan, but what we're really talking about is is perspective, really, uh, you know, twenty twenty five and and beyond, how to get to twenty thirty and at least make uh progress on every uh major, you know, street deficiency in the community. So with that, I will end the presentation and uh return to mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Um, and this is uh kind of discussion and comment item. Um, just uh the question about the avenues and Oval. Is there anything, and you know, this is, of course, someday I'll come back in January or whatever, but maybe to look at, staff and look at, anything that can be done to make it um just kind of acceptable, you know? Because they're 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 pretty wrecked, you know, this Second Street especially in Oda. And things have taken, you know, we we have a, we have the funds that we have. And so it does take a long time and they aren't many arterials, so the grant funding and all that. But, um, I I would hope that we can look at something, I don't know, I don't know. That will probably would make people upset, I don't know, but just, you know, something that can be done to make it a little bit more tangible.
Yeah, I I think, um, you know, it reminds me that, uh, you know, several years ago, when, uh, you know, the city had almost no options in terms of of paving, we did bring up and, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of support for the idea of potentially deasphalting some of these roads and having them revert back to gravel. I think there are some issues associated with that, um, but you know, there are benefits, obviously, cost wise, but, um, you know, the deficiency there is obviously dust. Uh, there is an ongoing maintenance issue with that. We don't have the equipment to actually properly maintain a gravel road. Um, so, you know, we have to purchase new equipment and that sort of thing. And so there would be, you know, a pretty concerted effort just to do that. Uh, but I know that the crew does go out to these areas to try to spot manage to the best of their ability, um, you know, with gravel and and whatever tools that we have available to to try to keep up on maintenance of these of these areas. But I, you know, from a from a P R standpoint, I I I do think that there would be issues with the gravel. Um, and and again, while it is relatively low cost and managed by staff, it is yet another thing to have to more aggressively maintain and manage. And we and if we went that route, we would need to get, make sure that staff have the appropriate tools. So, above aggrators and that sort of thing.
Also, noise, noise issue too with gravel.
I know, and and, you know, cars and rocks lying at cars. I just, and I wasn't suggesting gravel, I was just saying if there was any, anything out there we can look at, you know?
Um, one of the, one of the other options you you could do uh is you you in theory, you could uh prep it and do a real thick layer of slurry sealing. Um, it, but again, you're you're potentially impacting the drainage. And when you, when you fix something and you cause a
A problem.
Problem for private property, it's a liability for the city. Um, but we have seen seen that done on Walnut Avenue. Um, but uh, it was just not a city street. Um, but, uh, you know, again, uh, it may create just as many problems as a fix, so.
Okay, can I stand there with them?
I I largely had the same question. I I would, oh God, I would love a Second Avenue, just be better. Uh, I know, I mean, if I had a magic wand, um, so I do understand, um, you know, we're, we do have limitations and and whatnot, um. I would love to see Second Avenue be a priority, to the extent that it can be. That's it.
Okay. Councilor Will.
Yeah, on Second Avenue, it says here, staff recommends issuing a project study report with the engineers provide a preliminary cost. I think that we might want to do because and we at least we'll know how it's going to be fixed. And instead of, I mean, keep it, keep it the best we can, but will we fix it? I think we need to fix it. It's been many, many years. I don't even go down. Let's do it. More on mine. And then, um, on Pacific, we were talking about, I got this wrong, county, doing some work up there, but that isn't that for the county to do, Pacific Avenue is a truck route?
Um, so no, uh, it it's it's still ultimately the city's responsibility.
I read something that we had put that if it was the county's, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, I I can double, I can double check on that.
Yeah, just because it was the truck route. Um. Okay, I was gonna ask about the street sweeper. A long time ago, we decided we'd get a street sweeper, but they, they took a look at it and there wasn't enough mileage that they could actually use to sweep that made it cost effective to buy the, you know, there's lots of street. And I don't know if we have enough, there's enough now to where we would have enough mileage that we would be able to sweep.
Yeah, so you definitely, um, you know, the the lane line here is relatively small. Um, and I think, um, so I think the the question is, would you, would you purchase a smaller, more affordable
Yeah.
uh sweeper? So, uh, the city had a sweeper a number of years ago, uh, but it wasn't car compliant and it was just a folder. And I I don't know if I if I ever saw it operate, but um, that was liquidated surplus a long time ago. But, um, but what we would be looking at is more on the scale of, say, a university sweeper or maybe something a little bit bigger than a university sweeper. Uh, and so, you know, we did, uh, in the in the middle of the earthquake response and a couple of years ago, I had inquired about a specific piece of equipment. And so, uh, we did have a company roll through town and uh uh deliver a sweeper for us to just test out. Uh, and so that's the Ravo uh sweeper that's listed uh listed here. And um, and this number might be a little bit high for what the cost of that piece of equipment would be. Um, but it it's more on the scale of what would be useful and affordable in Real Del. We're looking to purchase something, um, that, uh, you know, uh, Fortuna, Eureka sized street uh street sweepers, it's going to be significantly more expensive. And I said, certainly, I I think, yeah, it doesn't justify the cost, uh, but a smaller sweeper that's still able to cover the lane lines uh and and do so safely um is uh would be helpful. Um, and again, there may be some nexus there with economic development or uh beautification, that sort of thing, that uh that could be attractive to the council um in in terms of funding.
Yeah, um, same time with the employee that's gonna be out, so we did these with their room. That all, yeah. Councilmember Warren?
Uh, no, yes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
Um, well, I agree with Councilmember one on one. Yeah, and Second Avenue is, I think, needs to have a priority on our listing. All of us, the price of the coffin is pretty, still pretty high, so I don't know how to overcome that hurdle. The uh the question with, um, one of the stuff on here, I don't know if that falls under something to do with the county is on uh Blue Line only. We're still in the city limits and we said the, to the, digging through this with previous, I mean, we're responsible for that. Second there, yeah, the kind of, if it did get away with it, the county's gonna have to unless the whole, everybody that's out that road is gonna have to drive the, probably over across, you know, across, um, you know, bridge, and so you know, it's some, some might have to be worked out, but we still gotta pay attention to that, because there are times you go out and it seems like.
Yeah, it is called Blue Slide Road, so it 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 is a problem. There obviously was older slide from uh several decades ago that uh that was uh ripped around and repaired. Um, that, you know, uh, you know, certainly depends on the situation where uh if there is some sort of catastrophic failure. I know that we did take a look at it with and have some discussions with the city engineer about it. We inspected the culverts, actually, the culverts are in good condition, repair. And that was on on the list for the uh for the original uh five year, five year C I P. Um, so we're doing, uh, what we're trying to do is is demonstrate that we are doing maintenance on the road. So our last crack ceiling went all the way up, uh, went, yeah, all the way up to city limits. Um, and then actually on Thursday, the guy should be up there, yeah. What's up?
It's on Friday.
Oh, I guess it's on Friday now. Um, uh, they should be up there doing uh additional earthquake, uh, uh, look the last of the earthquake emergency repairs, so.
Well, I feel it's a good, it's a good summary, you know, it's a good, good guideline, so I guess I can see where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you. And city manager on the street sweeper, is that something that you're looking at now? Or is it something that projected in the future?
Um, the idea is, yeah, we would, it would be a part of the five year C I P where we, you know, it's you know, it's it's part of what we want to try to accomplish for the city, uh, but balanced and prioritized by the council. Um, the last major piece of equipment that we purchased um was the back, well, would it would be the backhoe, and that was done on lease purchase, so there's a way to kind of spread out the cost. Um, so we do have, you know, revenue coming in through S B one and into the the road fund. And so kind of maybe trying to split the pie three ways and find different ways of financing it. Um, and spreading out that cost would make it more uh palatable. And that's why I mentioned the economic development nexus, the clean streams, which is the, the council does have um, a s- a small pot of economic development money um that could go towards that and would certainly make some people very happy. But, um, uh, but the the these are all the kind of the questions and conversations that, you know, I'm hoping that the council thinks about over the holiday break. And maybe if you have different ideas or brand new ones, certainly staff is, you know, we can't come up with uh the best ideas and we're certainly want the councils to weigh in. Um, so if there's other ideas, that sort of thing, um, that would be great. Certainly, we'll be talking to staff as well uh internally to see if there are any other equipment related items. Uh, but that figure I'm gonna have to replace the dump truck, um, some other pieces of equipment, um, uh, down there, but.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who have questions? Any hands raised? Can you tell? Then we will close this item and just keep it in our heads to think about. And we move on to item J, number one, page twenty six in our packet.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garnes, members of the council. This is uh item, uh, just some housekeeping to uh have the council weigh in in on the cancellation of the December nineteenth uh city council meeting. Um, uh, probably more often than not, this meeting is canceled, um, particularly on uh non-election years, which this will be one uh where we don't have a new council member to swear in. Um, uh, so, uh, and then even then, the timing sometimes doesn't work out where we get the final tally in on time to to schedule the meeting. Um, so a- at this point in time, although we do have an agenda that uh setting meeting in the morning tomorrow morning with staff, uh, where we try to, uh, you know, develop uh the next, uh, and kind of work on the final version of the next agenda for the council. Uh, right now, uh, and Karen can confirm or deny, but there doesn't appear to be anything that needs to be on the agenda that absolutely needs council approval or would hold out progress to other items uh before the council. So, uh, but ultimately, the way this has been handled in the past is, um, you know, staff converses with the mayor and then, you know, there's a decision to, you know, cancel a meeting. We don't, we actually, we cancel very few meetings. Um, I think the last one was in September, but before that, you know, uh, I can't remember even the last time we had canceled a meeting. So, uh, so it's a relatively rare, uh, rare thing to do uh around the holidays, but um it is uh agendaized for the council to discuss.
Thank you, city manager. It's kind of like, you know, the city gift to the council. Don't bring up anything big. Um, if if something were to come up, though, you could just like email and say, we need to have an emergency meeting or we we need to have a regular meeting. If something were to come up, you know, that's just crucial.
Correct. So we can hold a special meeting with the twenty four hours notice. Again, that those are really rare.
Right.
Rare to ever do those, but but that is.
Well, um, I'm asking that as for consensus, yea, nay, or any questions?
Did I get to do that the day of our annually scheduled earthquake or?
Yeah.
Someone's gonna be here anyway. But, um.
If there's pressing business that pops up magically and you just need me, I'll be here. But if there's none, okay, it's okay. I guess we'll skip that.
Okay, yeah, so I think the consensus is we can cancel this one and we will be on standby if we need an emergency. The emergency thing. Um, so, well, that, so final item has been pulled. So we will ask for, uh, thank you, Stephen. Thanks for coming. You have a happy holiday.
You both.
Thank you. Okay, how important are communications? What do you?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say what a nice Christmas tree I mean, we have. I mean, the fire department, everybody did a wonderful job. It was just really nice. And even though it was raining, a lot of community was there and it was just a nice thing. And I didn't have some people else, but, oh, I wanted, if your last day is on the second, I'm not gonna be here, so good luck with whatever you do. Are you a stay in area? Or you know, I say. I'm not gonna be here, so good luck. But whatever you do, are you the standing area? Or, you know, I say. Oh, oh, sorry. But it's been nice working. Yes, and I hope to see you on the
Are you coming to the meeting on January second?
I am not.
It's okay. That will talk here. Um yes, the tree lighting was phenomenal. We did a really good job. I was very impressed by the police department, the uh resource center, Sarah did great at cleaning that place up and making it look really nice and having it be inviting and incorporating events and activities for children. And it was just a lovely, small-town Christmas event. Um so Chamber of Commerce, Fire Department, Resource Center, thank you for that. On that note, um if anybody's interested in entering our house or business in the annual Christmas decorating test, I did it. Um you can do that uh by going to the Facebook page for the Real Del Chamber of Commerce, there's a little link there. And it's funny, entering your address and people drive around and they look at your decorations and then they go, you know, there's prizes, I don't know what they are. Uh but it's a, it's a cute thing. Um I had a chamber meeting this past Friday and the talk of that chamber meeting was taking down the Christmas decorations. Um that will be the first weekend of January. It will be much the same. They are always looking for volunteers. Uh and so you might see people out there uh doing that. I went to a reading meeting. We heard about regional housing trust funds, which was an interesting idea. Uh it hasn't been flushed out as much um as I would like it to be before we bring it to this council and say, we better pay attention to this. Um upcoming? Is our nuisance meeting canceled?
Yes.
Right? Okay, so our nuisance meeting is uh canceled this month. So, you know, all the people banging down the doors to come to that, please find something else to do. Uh and then this meeting tomorrow, I'm interested in, and I think that is it. Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Except Derek. I'm just kidding.
Better, you bet.
Oh.
Councilmember Ward?
Uh I have
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
I don't have a whole lot. There's no, HTMA doesn't have a meeting in December. And then RCPA has moved out a week, so we do that on the that was not a whole lot here.
Thank you. I have an HTA meeting in the morning and uh the meeting in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And um Thursday is the food drive in Eureka. Um Senator McGuire does it every year, so eight-year. It's at the Safeway on Harris. And um I've been going and it's, you know, it, all the, all the schools uh have, get donations. And then they, each one comes in one at a time and they dump all their stuff and they weigh it and there's a winner at the end.
Wow.
Um and so it's, it's a little competitive, so it's fun in that sense. And what the volunteers do, volunteers help move this, the goods from the trucks or the vans or whatever, uh the trailers that they haul the stuff there and into the boxes over where the um, you know, and then they move those boxes after after they've weighed them or however they determine, you know, the weight. Um so that is um um Thursday, this Thursday, the seventh, at three-thirty, if I think it begins at three-thirty, at um Safeway on Harris Street. And, you know, it's, it's kind of fun. And
The Starbucks inside that safe was really good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thanks for the good. But it's good, it is good, yeah.
Um um so I think that's all that I have. Thank you, Derek. Um my goodness, you've been tremendous.
Thank you.
And very much for everything. And thank the city and police uh for our department for decorating the vehicles. Um hey, I think the city struggled a bit. It was so good to do, you know, with all the colorful lights.
Yes.
And um I love the little paw guy up on top. And so thank you, uh thank you for participating. Um it was greatly appreciated. It was nice to be a part of the parade. Um I got a picture of Santa Claus, myself and Santa Claus and Crystal and her daughter. Now it was fun. And I think we are going to be in the Fortuna Parade, Lighted Parade, and the Eureka Lighted Parade um as well, uh representing the city of Real Del. And that's always good to put ourselves out there in front of everyone else and let them know that we exist and we count. So anyway, that is all. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy everything. And I hope everyone has a really good rest of the year. I hope we just hold it together. No shaking. And um we will see you all next year. Thank you so very much for everything this year. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion in a second.